To introduce Mr. Maniella. We have done, I think, you know, for those of you who have attended board meetings or have kids, particularly in the high school. We've done a lot of work in introducing courses through the elective side of things that really fill out our academy program. Remembering that all of those programs are open to all of our kids. You don't have to be in an academy to take the courses that we're sharing. But I asked Mr. Maniella to share some of the new courses that are at part of our high school program this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Maniella.
Thank you, Dr. Kami. Good evening, Board of Education and parents. Just give me one second, please, while I share my screen. Okay, is everyone seeing the screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. So tonight, we're going to show you and give you an update regarding some of our new courses, predominantly at the high school. Tonight's presentation you'll see has several videos embedded within it so you can see students at work in these new courses. We start with our introduction to the world of drones course. This is a new course this year, which had over 116 students express interest as soon as we posted that course in our course offering book. I think the current enrollment is roughly around 130 students. It's a half-year course, which ultimately will end with the students having the opportunity to take an exam, which will allow them to become certified drone pilots under the FAA regulations. So we're very excited about this new course. So let's take a minute to see students at work and see this course in action. Excellent. Hopefully, you're excited as I am when I watch that video. It's very thrilling to watch students in action. Our next course, which we introduced this year, is our Coding One program, which is our programming concepts and problem solving as we continue to build in our coding sequence. This particular course, like the drawing course, is part of our STEM and Engineering Academy. In this course, students will learn the basic problem-solving techniques and coding skills of Java, Visual Basics, C++. They use Arduino and Raspberry Pi boards during their coursework. And it's a half-year course. This particular course is also a dual enrollment course so students can receive both high school and college credit. Once again, let's hear a little bit about this course from the teacher, Mr. DeAngelis, and see some students in action.
Hi, everyone. I'm Anthony DeAngelis. So in coding, what we're doing right now is we're actually learning how to code servos in sync with LED lights. So when the servos are on, the LED lights will be on to indicate to you as the operator that, hey, we have power going for a servo. So if the students do it successfully, this is what it will look like. You have blinking LED lights. You have servos that are spinning continuously. And that is what we're learning as of right now, using our Arduino boards with our power loss cords.
This course is also very popular. It has approximately 120 students currently enrolled. So we're very excited about these two new courses, and you're one receiving such high interest. And we'll continue to build on them. Our next...
Hi, everyone. I'm Anthony DeAngelis.
Apologize. The next item is not necessarily a course, but it... This is a news literacy, which is going to be embedded in our ELA and social studies curriculum. So it's not an add-on. It's not a new course. It's important skills that all our students need to know. As consumers of different media, whether it's digital media, traditional media, there's a lot of news. And when we poll Americans, you'll see it says in the bottom slide that 58% of Americans say it's hard it's being formed because of the vast amount of information and news available. And you hear that term fake news all the time, and we need our students to be able to decipher. When they review different news sources, what is credible and what is not? So it's a very important skill. We're very proud of this infusion of this content into our curriculum because with the second school in Long Island, who we consider a lighthouse school district from Stony Brook University, we did receive a grant to build this particular curriculum within our ELA and social studies programming. This is the first year that we are building this into our program. So students are ready. You'll see this next slide shows the sequence of the vertical and horizontal articulation of the skills that students are studying. Starts in sixth grade. Each marking period through ELA and social studies, students are learning one of the foundational skills. We had our ELA and social studies teachers attended a summer institute virtually through Stony Brook on how to identify the news, whether it's making it credible or not. The slide you see to the right, how to spot fake news, kind of goes over some of the skills that students are learning, right? To learn to read beyond the text, to check the author, and to do what they call vertical reading, to go to the multiple different webpages to check the reliability. This is also taking place in the high school. So here you'll see a high school vertical and horizontal curriculum map. The students are going to build on, you know, these skills that they're learning through the course of the year. And they spend time practicing these skills in the coursework. Next new course is extremely exciting, sports officiating. This particular course will allow our students to take an examination to become a sports official. This year, they're learning soccer and volleyball, sports officiating courses. This means the students will be able to, after they finish the course and take certification exam, they pass it, be able to work, make money. They could officiate games, go to college at the same time. And the sports officials make, you know, a good amount of money on weekends. I know my son plays soccer, and I know there's always young sports officials there. So we're very excited to offer this to our students. We thank Ed Ramirez for helping develop this program for us. So here's a student and teacher talking about the program.
Hi, I'm Mr. Llewellyn, and this year we have a brand-new course we're offering at the high school. It's officiating, and we're offering two different sections of soccer and volleyball. And the way the course basically works is I'm a certified soccer official, and the kids in the class are going to learn how to become a soccer official. And then they could take that experience in the class. They can take a test and bring it to the real world when they go to college next year. They can enroll in the local chapter, and they could start officiating middle school and JV games starting next year to make some money and really use this class to the best of their ability.
My name is Caitlin Drepida. I'm a senior at Baldwin High School. I play volleyball and lacrosse. And one of the reasons I wanted to take this course was because half of the year they give you a volleyball officiating. And so I would be able to coach middle school and JV volleyball. And I love watching the sport, and I love learning more about the sports. Very interactive course. We go outside on the soccer field a lot. It's a very informative course. We have our own book that we can learn the rules. What I want to get out of the class is that I want to be able to coach JV and middle school sports. It allows me to have a job, and I just love learning about the sports in general, and it'll give me more of a respect towards the coaches and the referees because it's actually a very hard job.
It is a hard job. Our next two new courses in the high school are part of our Education Academy. Our Education Academy is partnered with Malloy. So a lot of the courses in Education Academy are considered dual- enrollment courses with Malloy. The first one is contemporary topics in education. In this course, learners will conduct research on contemporary issues in education, including school policy and school reform. Ultimately, this course will serve as a capstone project at the end that they need to complete in order to show that they successfully are able to tackle one of these issues, these hot topics, and provide a solution to it. This is a half-year course, therefore, half the credit. And once again, it's part of our Education Academy. The second new course that we choose this year, part of our Education Academy, is called Introduction to Teaching. This course is extremely exciting because it's going to mimic a course that students will take if they were education students in college. Students would and are going to participate in observation hours and almost like a student teaching program. So this course is going to provide our students with field experience and teach them to create and present different units of study. This is another half-year elective course, and once again, part of our Education Academy. And here's Ms. Belling to explain a little bit more about the course.
Introduction to Teaching is a hands-on internship experience course where the students get to engage with elementary students inside the classroom. So this is an experience that is very unique for a high school level. They're going to focus on planning lessons, state and national standards to form these lessons, classroom management, and we'll also talk about certification requirements, professional expectations. So as they're growing into this career, they're know exactly what they're going to learn and whether or not this is a good path for them. Android Teaching is one of the courses offered in the Education Academy that will filter into foundations of education where students will get college credit. So when they graduate high school, they will be offered college credit through Malloy College. Introduction to Teach Without...
Our next course is College Criminalistics. This course is a dual- enrollment course with Malloy as well, and it's part of our Law Academy. And really, it's taking our previously-known forensic course and increasing the rigor so students can also obtain college credit. Here's Ms. Johnson explaining a little about the course and you can see what some students are doing this year.
Okay, so welcome to College Criminalistics. What we're going to be doing today is we're going to be making our own graphite fingerprints. So we are going to be using graphite from pencils and tape in order to create our own fingerprints, loops, arches, and whirls from our fingers. We're going to be lifting them and documenting them, classifying them into different groups. Students at home are doing the same thing with materials at home. And we're going to be figuring out the most common of these common fingerprints and being able to differentiate them from each other. Okay, so welcome to College Criminalistics.
And the final course we introduced this year is Theater One, Theater Arts One, which is part of our Fine and Performing Arts Academy, which is a new academy this year. In this course, learners will strengthen their basic theater principles in stage movement, voice, dictation. They will learn in the work of various playwrights. Hope is to bring in master playwrights so students can study under them. And students will also ultimately participate in the various performances that take place at the high school. This is a full-year course, and currently, it's not a dual- enrollment course. And this is a student. Let's hear from a student about his experience so far in Theater One.
Hello, my name is Bobby Crochet, and today I'm in Theater One, and I'm going to be doing a debate today. My debate topic was, should we wear school uniforms or not? And the process of, like, forming this debate was actually really fun. So I went through a lot of research stages, and you had to make sure that sites were credible. I think this was really, this was a really fun topic to do, especially because it's, like, in school. Like, some people wear school uniforms and some don't. And I think it, like, relates to our society today.
What's nice about this particular video is you get to see how the students in class are interacting and collaborating with students who are learning remotely at home. So Ms. Chulson, the teacher, and all the teachers in the high school, middle school are able to engage learners in both learning environments regardless, which is fantastic.
Hello, my name is...
All right. Lastly, just want to give you a glimpse of what's on the horizon for 2021, 2022. We are currently exploring a couple of new courses. The first is Foundations in Education, which would be part of the Education Academy, be a senior year course, and also would be a dual- enrollment course with Malloy, helping students step right to Malloy with, hopefully, around 30 credits in the education program. We're also looking to collaborate further with Stony Brook University and bring in their News Literacy ACE program, which is a dual- enrollment course, combining it with civics, which is a extremely important topic, and create a civics and user C course in the high school as a dual- enrollment course. And then we're also looking to add another coding sequence in. Currently, our students can take Coding One, AP Computer Science Principles, or AP Computer Science A. So we want to get another coding class in there, one in which will end with the opportunity for students to pass a industry certification exam. So those are some of the upcoming potential courses for next year. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Maniella.
Thank you, Dr. Kami.
That's fabulous. If I could just say, it's just fabulous. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Maniella?
No, I just want to say, I was texting my son, who's majoring in computer engineering at the University of Pittsburgh. He was quite impressed with what's going on in Coding One. Sounds like his freshman year of computer engineering. So he... Kudos to you guys and all the teachers at the high school.
Indeed. Who else said, Annie?
So again, I agree with the sentiments. This is amazing. There were just two classifications. One, can you explain that, what you said about lighthouse school district? Again, can you explain that to me, please?
Dr. Kami, you want to explain it, or me explain it?
You can do it.
So we had an opportunity to meet with one of the professors from Stony Brook University as we were exploring this particular coursework. After meeting with him, Stony Brook provides an opportunity for grants. To get that grant, you have to go through an application process, present how we're going to engage with Stony Brook, as well as bring their foundational knowledge and skills into our curriculum. So we wrote basically an application, a grant application, showing how we would embed the user C curriculum in our own ELA and social studies curriculum. We discussed about a World Day for Middle School, how we can fuse it in that. And we discussed that six-to-twelve articulation, our vision. And we were awarded that grant. And we are considered a lighthouse school district.
Oh, so it's a grant. That's great.
I just want to add that Stony Brook found us. Yeah, I received a call, I guess it's about a year ago now, from the person who started this whole program at Stony Brook. Yeah, he had heard about us. He heard about the work that we were doing, and he asked to meet with me. And so we met, and so the rest is history.
Okay, that's great. That's great. And we're one of the two school districts, I think you said, right? One of two, so that's phenomenal.
Long Island.
In Long Island, okay. And then the other question, two questions, some more questions. One is, how popular is the officiating course? Because I think that's phenomenal that we're even offering that.
We have two sections running right now. And also, I do not remember the enrollment. It is pretty popular. Mr. Ramirez did a fantastic job. He surveyed the students first to determine what their area of interest would be. Before we created the courses, we surveyed them. You know, we thought football would be like one of the top ones, but soccer and volleyball, based on student selection. Then we asked a couple of teachers to go to summer training, which they did. And that's why we're running those two particular courses.
Okay, great. And then the last one, just quickly, you mentioned Coding Two coming in 2021 in the future. What were the languages? Do you know what languages they may be? Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
They're languages your son is already studying.
We are collaborating with, you know, an expert in the field. My main goal, as you know, our goal as a district is, Dr. Kami's goal is to have our courses bring relevant to our students and end in industry certification if we can. So we're looking at various Microsoft languages. Microsoft does offer some certification assessments for our students, so it might take that particular path.
Okay.
But we're in conversations now. Mr. Fuchalanga is also involved in those conversations with us, and we hope to have a proposal soon and identify, you know, which languages we learn.
Okay, well, it's great that this is already being, just being considered. I think there's a lot of research, so kudos to you all for even putting this in plan. This is great. Thank you.
I agree.
One of the things I hope everybody recognizes is that everything that you saw there, that there are some commonalities. One is where the, there is a need in industry. So you see that in the droning, you see that in the coding, you see that in education. Another is the relevance in, for the kids, you know, things that are interesting to them. And, you know, all of this is built around the elective program, which is why we're pushing so hard for New York State to reconsider graduation requirements because we'd like to be able to offer more coding classes, more joining classes, make sure every single student is certified. But the high school program is taken up in large part with the required courses. You see the news literacy, and you see we're building civics into news literacy going into next year. And this is all, these are all things we believe our kids need going forward. And, you know, it's a nine-period day. Hopefully, it stays a nine-period day, with one period being launched. There's just limited capacity inside a school day, given what's required by New York State.
Does anyone else have any questions? Tom?
Yeah, I had a question for Dr. Kami. I was wondering, can school board trustees sit in on the droning class?
No, I will tell you that when I go in, when I go into the robotics class, they, I think they lock the door so that I, because they don't let me play with the robots. So I'm guessing they're not letting me play with the drones either.
Okay.
Anyone else? Karen?
I just want to say kudos to everybody. I mean, you know, we want to always move forward and think about what we want to set our kids up for in the future, not what has happened in the past. So again, this is great, and you guys are doing fantastic work, and thank you.
I agree. What I was going to ask, Ms. Maniella, is I'm guessing that these courses are all being taught by current staff. Is that the case?
That's correct.
So that I have to give kudos to people who are picking up new skills and studying new things and open to, you know, to doing something that's really so different. I, I'm just so impressed. I'm impressed by the classes and the fact that our own staff is, is teaching them.
Yes, that's a great point.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right.
Questions, Mrs. O'Hagan? You have...
Sue has, Sue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
Just a comment. So of course, kudos on all of it. It's very exciting, but I love the idea that we are going to such lengths to incubate what could be future teachers coming back into our district. Isn't that a wonderful thing?
It is, and highly skilled future teachers too, which is...
Yes, yes.
Special plus.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments and reports from the Board of Education. Mr. Smith?
I feel like I just got called on by Mary Jo.
You might have something.
No, I did attend the New York State School Boards Association Convention virtually last week and went to the business meeting, which was all very interesting. I'll look forward to giving a more complete report next month.
Yeah, for any of the rest of us who attended that convention, which was, of course, all virtual, we will present our reports at the December meeting. I just think for anyone in the public who is, is viewing, in July, when we do our reorganization meeting, we approve the dues for a variety of organizations that we, as board members, belong to. And these are organizations that both educate us and also advocate on our behalf. So it's important, I think, for us to, to give some indication to the public where, where the money is going and how we are benefiting from our participation with these different organizations. Does, yes, Mrs. Dreska?
Because we had a long agenda, I didn't bring these up at the last meeting, but I did participate in the Equity and Inclusivity webinar that NISBA held. It was probably back October 7th. And it was primarily a lot of discussions around equity and equality. The good news is a lot of the conversations or recommendations, I felt that we, as a district, were on our way and already in discussions as a board. So that was great to see that we were in line with other districts. The other meeting that I participated in, in early October, was the District-wide Health and Safety Meeting. Mr. Ramirez, not Mr. Ramirez, Mr. Randazzo participated in that. And what I thought was great was, they mentioned that the drills were not surprise drills this year because of the importance of having the students have masks and keeping the six feet and social distancing involved in terms of any drills, evacuations, and lockdowns. So, you know, it's great to see that the district is just keeping in mind all these things that I would not even think of, that you just have to have in mind when planning drills, just to say, well, we, we have to make sure that everyone's six feet apart. So it just shows a lot of things to think about under this new world that we're living in. So those were my two points that I wanted to make.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I attended the annual meeting of refit. That was held virtually in October, on October 26th. I also attended the local Baldwin Coalition meeting, which was just this past week. And this morning, I co-hosted the Long Island Education Coalition meeting. And I, I mentioned these in part because the conversations around the table were so similar. There is extraordinary concern about finance going forward and about the topics that we are going to put together to lobby our elected officials between the additional expenses that we are incurring due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the fact that aid has already been reduced, state aid, and there's a strong possibility that because of the loss of revenue to the state that that will continue. There was a lot of consternation about it. And not only that, but one of our members was reviewing the history of these cuts going back to 1991, when we had cuts right in the middle of the year and had to let staff go and drop programs right in the midst of, of our school year. And the point was made that these things happened not only then, but then, of course, most recently in 2008, during the recession. And at the time, in the earlier cases, districts were able to raise taxes that they needed, sometimes by as much as 10% or 11% or 12%. sometimes by as much as 10 or 11 or 12%. And that enabled them to keep from becoming educationally insolvent with the advent of the tax cap. That's no longer a possibility. So there is real concern going forward as to how districts are going to manage. And Long Island has traditionally been the hardest hit in all of these because of the way in which state aid is distributed, and has also been the area that has taken the longest to come back from whatever cuts have been inflicted on us. So I think we just need to pay attention. We need to be very much aware that this is coming down the road for us and, and just keep our minds open to thinking about solutions and possible adjustments that we have to make. But anyway, it was a very sobering series of meetings. And the only other thing I wanted to say is that someone who was a longtime staff member in Baldwin, who is now consulting for us, Mrs. Pat Van Hazel, was cited, got a wonderful award as a mentor. She runs our mentoring program in Baldwin, and she is a treasure. So I want to congratulate her on her award, and I want to reiterate the kudos that Dr. Kami expressed to both Mr. Ramirez and Dr. Gallo, the fact that we have done as well as we have in keeping our buildings open and keeping the lid on cases has, has been nothing less than extraordinary. So they deserve a lot of credit. So I just wanted to say that on behalf of the board. Hey, does anyone, yes, Mrs. Reed?
So I had the opportunity, as your PTA council liaison, to attend last month's meeting. Briefly spoke about the results of Innovation 2020, talked about how we, you know, were kind of all disappointed and at the results and trying to figure out what our next step would be moving forward. Also mentioned that the budget calendar is Ben, was approved last month, and that the administration would be moving towards, you know, setting up the budget for the 21, 22 school year, and it, things look grim. I mean, Dr. Kami echoed the same sentiment as that. Also invited many people to attend this meeting because we knew that we were going to have this fabulous presentation from Mr. Maniella on the classes that were going to be, that the new courses that were offered at the high school. And one other thing, I mean, I have to say, like everything else, everyone is struggling with this, this forum, but I have to tell you, the PTAs are still, you know, finding creative ways to keep, you know, to fundraise and to engage families with programs and, and, and very proud of them. One other thing that came up, and I don't know what they're going to do moving forward, but they did talk, you know, every year, there's conversation about the traffic concerns around the school, the elementary schools. And of course, it was brought up by Lennox Parent, that they were experiencing some problems around the, the grounds at Lennox, as, and a couple of the schools chimed in. So I don't know what, I mean, part of the problem is there are, there's a dearth of crossing guards. I mean, they, you know, there is a shortage. So I don't know what their next move would be. I mean, I would recommend that they would get together and see if that's something that they can take on, but that was a concern that they expressed at the meeting. And that's pretty much all I have for you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Okay. Personnel actions report. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report for November 4th, 2020, as amended and detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith, because this involves the names of individual staff members, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Dr. Kami?
If I could just share with the community that as a result of the board accepting the Personal Actions Report, on that Personal Actions Report is movement of our social studies supervisor, Ms. Dr. Ricky Papandria, from social studies supervisor to assistant principal at the high school, who will be taking on the roles, which include master scheduling and the guidance department. So I just want to congratulate Dr. Papandria, who I know is on the Zoom right now. So congratulations, Dr. Papandria.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education in September and October 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. This involves the names of individual children, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. Again, it involves the names of children, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education accepts a donation with thanks of $500 from Bethpage Cares Charitable Giving Program of Bethpage Federal Credit Union that will be used to support the annual Mentor-Mentee Breakfast at Baldwin High School, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Reed, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education accepts a check with thanks in the amount of $500 that was awarded to Baldwin High School's School-to-Career Program through Mentor New York's Mentor of the Year Awards Event. This monetary award will be, will be used in support of the inspirational mentoring events, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. Are there any questions or comments? Again, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the corrective action plan for both the internal audit risk assessment and the external audit, based on year-end June 30th, 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith.
And seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. The Board of Education approves the budget transfers over $10,000 for the period September 1, 2020 through September 30th, 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any questions? Or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. As Board President, I am calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items five through 12. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Seeing no hands. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business items five through 12?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dreska, seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve business items five through 12?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is a policy. This is the first read, so we do not vote on it. It is the Policy on Acceptable Use for Remote Learning. And I have a question. This has, this I believe has been updated. Dr. Kami, is this an updated version?
Yeah, it's an updated version as a result of two things. One is distributing computers for students to use at home, and it's, this whole notion of remote learning. So it is acceptable use policy updated for where we are today.
Okay, if you don't mind, I think I will read it, since it is a policy that is relatively new because of the current circumstances. From time to time, schools may be closed as a result of social unrest, emergency situations, such as public health emergency, epidemic, pandemic, weather conditions, or regulations or restrictions imposed by any government or governmental agency, but may pursuant to governmental action be required to provide remote learning opportunities for students. In accordance with guidance from the New York State Department of Education, the school district may implement alternate remote instruction in the event of a school closure or student absence, the continuity of the learning plan. To facilitate the continuity of the learning plan, the school district has authorized its faculty and administration to utilize online learning platforms. These platforms are useful educational tools and provide opportunities for personal connection between teachers and students. Through these platforms, teachers will continue to maximize opportunities to engage students and to interact with them through technology. So unless there are any concerns, this will come up at the next meeting for further discussion and possible vote. Okay. Let's see, does anyone have anything under other? All right. Let me announce some dates. We will have parent-teacher conferences on, actually tomorrow, from 6:30 to 9:30. They will be virtual, I guess, doesn't say here. The schools will be closed on Veterans Day, Wednesday, November 11th. There are further parent-teachers conferences for the middle and high school on Thursday, November 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and 6:30 to 9:00. Schools will be closed for the Thanksgiving recess, Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th. Parent-teacher conferences for K5 will be on Thursday, December 3rd. Schools will be closed for elementary students for parent-teacher conferences on Friday, December 4th. And our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, December 9th, at 8:00 PM. At, well, at Lennox School, but it will actually, of course, be virtual. Okay, does anyone else have anything to raise or comment on? Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Dreska, seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Like a sweet and savory, what you call it for you, huh? All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.